The school committee to honor, I'll remind everybody that we should go off to public schools as law schools and successfully engage lifelong learners.
Thank you. I will call the meeting of the Gloucester City Council to order. And we will start with a flag salute and a moment of silence. Don.
I would like to introduce the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose love, liberty, and justice for all.
A moment of silence. I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to the victims of the Parkland shooting and all who were affected by that horrible event. So, as we are commanded by the city charter and ordinance to have a joint school committee, city council meeting periodically, we thought this would be a great time to have one. And so, welcome to everyone. It's a great opportunity for us to communicate about so many of the things that we mutually have to deal with on behalf of our citizens. And it's an honor to be with the school committee. It's the fact that all of the elected officials of the city of Gloucester are here in one place. So, that's a big thing. So, with that, we've got an agenda of items that we'll follow. And this is a, it's a meeting, not necessarily a public hearing, because we don't have anything that we're holding votes on or anything like that. But this is an exchange of information for councilors and committee members. And I suppose if there are any members of the public who have a burning desire to speak on a specific issue, if they could ask for permission, we'll entertain that. So, with that, let's start with item number four, which is the status of the Massachusetts School Building Authority process regarding these Gloucester schools.
Thank you very much, Councilor Lundberg. And as you remember, in December, we came and you voted on a, the funding for feasibility study. And I believe at that point, that they did really go, to that point, there are any questions, I certainly can expand, but I'm going to stop from that point on. On February 14th, we really did very little between that point and other than make sure all of our paperwork was in order and submitted to MSBA after the vote for the funding for the feasibility study. On February 14th, Superintendent Sapphire and Council President Lundberg and I went to MSBA board meeting where they voted to accept us into the feasibility phase of the process of building a new school. And essentially, the feasibility phase consists of a number of things. The first thing that you do is you hire an owner's project manager. The building committee, which consists of 15 people, met and we have, and we've picked a subcommittee to actually do that process, because the 15 is a little cumbersome. But the owner's project manager provides technical support for the management of the feasibility process and the schematic design, which is the second phase of the feasibility study. They work through all phases of project development. They will stay on till the, till the closeout, as we proceed. They review all the submissions, the technical analysis of the project and program data, and a system, a generation of internal and external communications and presentations. The owner's project manager manages capital projects and supports in the analysis, update, and execution of the MSBA policies, which is very important, because MSBA is very strict with their policies and you need to do things exactly the way they tell you to do it. And they put together, they help put together the budget. So, where we're at right now is Donna Compton is in the process of refining the request for services that we met last Thursday and reviewed what she'd done so far. And we made a couple of changes and added some information. And that will go, has to go into MSBA for review. It has gone?
Yes.
It's been sent in. They need it two weeks to review it and make sure it's correct. And then, it goes into the central register, which is the state advertising for municipally-funded projects. But we can also advertise it wherever else we choose. You have to get that in a week before it goes in. And then, it sits there for two weeks and hopefully you get returns. We will have the subcommittee review the, well, Donna will review the applications first to make sure that people are qualified. And then, we'll pass them on to us. We'll grade them with a very systematic process prescribed by the MSBA. And then, we will reduce it to either the top three or four, which we will call interviews. We'll have to interview each one of the firms. We have to be very careful about keeping track of their answers and grading their answers. Each member of the subcommittee will do a score sheet for each question. We have to keep track of all of that. We then rank them one, two, and three. Because it's a request for services, there's no money involved in these, their submissions. We then sit down and negotiate with number one. If we don't come to an agreement with number one, we sit down with number two. And eventually, we hire somebody. And after we, after we get to the point where we put together a contract and we have to send that to MSBA, and they have to approve it. So, we hope to have an owner's project manager hired by the end of June. We would then start the process of hiring a design team. The owner's project manager is called clerk of the works, for lack of a better phrase, but they're much more than that, the subcategory of the word. The process for hiring a designer is different from when we were at, when we did West Parish. And this, MSBA now has a standing committee, which consists of 12 people that fit into different categories of skill sets. And we're allowed to send three people to join that group. They advertise for the design and make the choice of the designer themselves. At that point, we enter into a review of all the existing facilities, a review of all the possible sites that may be considered. And we work through the point of getting to what they call the preferred schematic design, which will have a building located on a site. It'll be monetized, the educational purpose will be explained, the costs will be roughed out, and we will, at that point, submit that. We'll have to go to the city for funding. And it is understood that to do this project, we're probably going to have to have a debt exclusion vote from the community, in our hope. And it will be a very tight schedule to meet that, is that that would be available to be voted on in November 2019 election, municipal election. If that passes, you then go into having a designer develop the contract arguments. That would take about another year. And then, they can start construction, and that would be about two years. So, talking about September 2022. Two, two. So, that's it. That's where we're at.
Right. Great. That's a great overview. I just wanted to make two comments about the process, since they were kind enough today, Jonathan was kind enough to invite me along with a car ride to Gloucester for that vote of the board, which was pretty much a foregone conclusion to move to the feasibility study. But a couple of things, just, you know, for everybody's information, which probably everyone knows. You know, the MSBA gets all this money from the sales tax. They get a penny for every dollar that was collected at the state. So, they get a lot of money, and they are the dispensers of, you know, that, those funds, which end up paying for about half of a school building. Yeah, the community has the other half to come up with. They have a bureaucratic structure, which Jonathan just explained, which I must say, sounds like a bureaucratic structure in the beginning, but at the end of the day, it's really helpful. They have a staff member who is assigned to our project to guide us, so that we make all these deadlines and have all the proper documentation, which is really helpful. You know, for, for, as school districts get larger and larger, obviously, they have more staff to do this. You know, we're kind of in the middle. We don't really have a whole lot of staff that can do all of that stuff. And, you know, we listened to some of the other school districts who were there, who were quite small. They would have no way of getting access to this money through this application process if MSBA did not have a staff to help them do that. So, that part is really, really helpful. And then, you get a clerk of the, clerk of the works, a project manager, which as we learned with West Parish, was pretty important. That was an important, that was crucial, it wouldn't have happened without that. And we got a really good product. So, then the other thing that we all have to wrestle with is the funding part of it. And that will be a community effort. So, those are my comments. But I would like to entertain other comments and questions from anyone, councilors or committee members.
I could add, during the feasibility study, MSBA will be working with us as well as, as we're hiring OPMs and designers and all the rest. We'll also be working on an educational plan. And quite part of the overall conception has to do with the consolidation. Two different schools, two different cultures, in part, there are distinctions in the way in which they approach their educational product. There's something called platooning in one school is co-teaching with the other. So, we'll be having, we're engaging ourselves in conversation and then formalizing that throughout the feasibility process as well. Because the educational process and program dictates the nature of how space itself is to be utilized, and that has to go into the conceptualization by, ultimately by the designer. So, that is a process that will be running concurrent with the preparation, the exploration of sites and everything else.
I have a question. November 2019 is the deadline for us to convince the community that this project needs to go forward. So, my question is, what is going to be the communication along the process to the community? I know with the last school, we did a page on the school website and updated it, and I was just hoping that that would continue to happen, so that the community as a whole isn't surprised three months before the election that, oh, by the way, this is what we're doing. So, what is the communication going to be for the community as a whole for the project?
We, the committee has, the building committee has established a subcommittee for communications and capital plans. It sits on that committee. He can probably tell you where they are.
So, I think our view of the communications at this point is just communicating about the project itself to build both information, so we can access a website, a website that's already been framed out, and it's, it's live and not yet. But there is a website, we're adding content as things come in. We're trying to make sure it has all the relevant documents, like approval, timelines, things like that. And also, we're trying to keep the parents engaged in the process of both school communities and hopefully the community at large. And then, as things progress, we'll try to figure out, you know, who does, what's the best vehicle for that genre of public finance to get it back.
Does the building, do you mean it's, do it get posted, or how does it, and those minutes are posted on the city website?
Maria takes the minutes.
And where are they posted?
I don't know that they've been posted yet. They've been posted on the school website or on the, on that board, you know, East Gloucester Building Committee website, which is.
Yeah, they'll both be linked to each other. So, depending whether you go directly to the site or Gloucester Public School site.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
This is Councilwoman Gillman.
So, when we did this for West Parish, when we did all this advertisement of what we were doing, the Q and A, and the whole school committee, we voted, and everyone knew what the updates were, it sat on the school website. And when we looked at how many kids we were getting, it wasn't as much as we had hoped for all the work that we put in. So, I'm wondering if part of your consideration could be, of course, you built it on the school website, but when you have major updates, talking to the mayor about having the city put just a little more of an update with a link to the school. So, it can be right at the center of the city's website, which is really helpful, because then we can all share it on our social media and get everyone to go right back into the schools and see it. So, the more we can broaden our distribution for all the good work that goes in, the fewer people will feel like they didn't know what was going on, or why didn't we know about this? Because we know a few people are reading the newspapers these days and who are in two different ways to look at this news. So, just a thought, sort of throw us your finding.
I have no problem with that. The only thing is people are just going to say, where are you going to put it? Right now, everyone has been saying is they don't care about the feasibility study, they don't care about this, they want input to make sure that we decide where it's going to go, they want input. So, we can update every website that we have and let them know what we need, what we need to do, and where we want to do is going to be completed. But once we get an agreement and everyone's happy where the location will go, I think it will be easier to actually let people know.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor O'Hara, speak up for the audio on the microphone.
Especially over there.
Thank you.
The truck is going to have a hard time.
Maybe I missed it. Have, we talked about, is it East Gloucester School, is it combined school?
The, when we put the statement of interest to the MSBA, it was for East Gloucester School. And the, and in the process of eligibility, we came and said that our plan is, this was the plan, the enforced plan of the school committee, is to consolidate East Gloucester and Veteran's School. And the law behind that is, it is economics as much as anything, that, you know, we have five elementary schools and we don't see that we're going to be able to go five, four more elementary schools. The idea that we might be able to go three more or two more is far more realistic. So, the, so we, we changed the name to the East Gloucester Bets, Flag Bets Building Committee, but somewhere along the line, MSBA said, no, you've got to keep just East Gloucester in your, in your communications, because that's the school that was approved by the MSBA. Although they completely endorsed the consolidation, it's still in our communications with MSBA if it's East Gloucester.
Thank you. Councilor O'Hara?
How many students are there in East Gloucester and how many students are there at Veteran's? And roughly, this teachers and staff, I don't know, we had, we had 350 students, I'm just trying to judge it. Because it's, it's, the total is going to be about 450. We, we had an enrollment done, as part of eligibility, doing enrollment projection. Basically, we provided MSBA with a lot of information, and they did the enrollment projection. And the, the staff, I'm not sure what the staff would, you know, there'd be some consolidation of staff, but not a lot. The, how much staff would be in the combined, 60, 65?
All blocks, probably 30, 35 per building.
Yeah. So.
That makes sense, because any, West Gloucester is 350 kids, 70 teachers and staff. So, this would be 450 kids, round numbers, so 100 more than West Parish. I'm just trying to get a feel for size, so it's going to be.
Well, conceptually, you've seen West Parish.
Yeah.
A school to house four classes per grade, as opposed to, West Parish has three classes per grade. And the three-story section of West Parish has, you would have to put an additional classroom on the end of that three-story for the three stories. That would give you these six additional classrooms that you'd need to go from, from four classes, from three classes to four. So, and then, you'd have to make the gym a little bit, you know, the gym is bigger than it needs to be at West Parish, but the cafeteria would have to do a little. So, it would be mass-wise, it wouldn't be a huge, much bigger building than what's there.
Councilor Cox.
Can you briefly just go over the sites again that you're looking at?
Well, we'll, we'll be required to look at the existing sites, East Gloucester and Veteran's. The sites that the building committee has identified being city-owned property that are large enough are Swinson's and The Pines, depending on which end you approach it from.
That's one site.
That's one site. The Green Street, and there's a site on Harrison Avenue, and, what? No, there's nothing on Tom Road. There is a, there is a potential, so city-owned land on Eastern Avenue, right on the Rockport border, but it doesn't seem to be viable, and it's also watershed. So, I mean, we'll mention that, but these decisions will get, we'll have the owner's project manager and the designer look at them, and they'll bring it down to a, they'll say, this can't build here, that's what we need before we decide having a discussion what the best site is. We need somebody to say, you know, what are viable sites? I mean, they may say, you can't do it at East Gloucester, or you can't do it at Bets', and then we'll eliminate those possibilities.
From this point until the site is identified, how long do you expect that to take?
Well, we're not going to hire an owner's project manager until the beginning of July, until we probably won't have a designer onboard until September. And then, they're going to have to do some work. It's going to be in the fall. We'll have our, we'll have meetings, certainly we're going to have many meetings, we're going to have meetings on, talking about, you know, the consolidation as well.
So, I think that the, you know, from a timetable standpoint, we're going to have a municipal election in the fall of 19. And as soon, and as the mayor said, what people are really interested in is, where's it going to be? What are the, if there's going to be a combination, which there probably is, but where it's going to be, and how much is it going to cost me? And if we are thinking as advocates of this project, of anybody who can advocate for the project, those are the questions that are going to be foremost in voters' minds. So, the sooner we know that, the better, because that's just going to be part of the conversation for the year leading up to the municipal election. Yes?
I have a question about what the city intends to do during that process. So, if we're thinking of a November election to find funding for the school, is there any interest on the city to come up with ideas, say what they're going to do with the property? If the Veteran's property is not deemed suitable for a school, and we choose to combine the school, is there an interest on the city to identify needs of that property? And I'm just going to throw this out there as an example, like say, for a safety building that we know we all need, and then consider that as hot, which would become an omnibus override or a debt exclusion, where you get more people to the fold to go for maybe two projects as opposed to one. And I know, this is just an idea.
It's very difficult to decide anything more than how, you know, we would have to bring it to the city, what we need to do. And to say that we're going to use that for safety or use that for that, it is very difficult anyways.
No, but I'm wondering if there's an interest on the.
Don't forget, we're not really going to enroll some major schools, so.
No, I'm just wondering if there's an interest on the city to identify any need for that site as we're doing this.
We will, we will, at the time of the. We don't want to say anything, or say we have plans for this when we really don't, until we decide what we're going to do and what people want.
Right.
We tried that with Fuller, didn't we? And it didn't happen. So, let's not continue the subject of what we want to put safety or where we want to put, because we have to do, we have to do our own analysis.
Yeah.
Is it going to be, if you can, you can do it. And I'm not going to get taxpayers' money to say, we're going to do an analysis on that, when we're concerned it's going to be there. So, when we get to this decision that the people say, you know what, yes, we can combine the schools, yes, we'd like to have it here, or yes, we'd like to have it there, then we'll go full force and figure out and get someone there. Because don't forget, once we have some money coming our way, we're going to get a person actually to come help us with all our laws, all our buildings, what can, can we do.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? This is Councilor Cox and then Councilor Gillman.
I actually completely agree with Melissa as far as, you know, trying to work together and trying to figure out what we can do with the buildings that are left. Because I think that's, that's one of the biggest concerns that I've heard. And I understand your point of view as well, is we don't want to get tired of ourselves. But I think we have to be thinking proactively about where we're going to be, what we're going to do with our empty schools, if it's deemed unfeasible to rebuild on those sites. And I think it has to be part of the process of rebuilding the school, you know, and that's, that's going back to what are we going to do with the empty property, so it doesn't sit there for five years.
So, we can discuss this further, but it would be all night. The fact is, if Fuller goes through, we get money from that, like we said, we're going to hire someone, we look at all our properties, what can be done in our properties, what cannot. We will look at safety and go, how fast can they get to one area, not another area? If we tell people we're going to put safety there, then you're going to have people saying, are you shutting down Magnolia? Are you shutting down, we're putting it fair before anything right now, let's figure out where we want to put it. Because if I say, yes, you know what, that one's great, that'll be great, maybe what we have for Cade of, put them there, offices, that could be great for a central location, that could be great for police, or that could be great for fire. Yes, we'll need the funds. Eventually, we're going to need a new fire department, we're going to need a new fireplace, we're going to need these things. Naturally, we're going to have to go to the city, and we're going to have to say, you know what, taxpayers, we're going to need 40 million for new school, another 30 for this, do you want to combine them, do you not want to combine them? We'll, we'll discuss that, but right now, it's kind of hard for me to say we're going to do that until we actually know what we have and don't have.
Right. I totally understand that, and I agree with that, but that wasn't what I was saying. I was saying that we need to look at everything in conjunction with it.
Exactly. What I'm saying is that is not going to happen.
But I do believe fall of 2018, once we identify the site, we absolutely need to start thinking about what's going to happen to the other properties.
We all have ideas, what wants to go what, what can be done and whatever not to be done, but we cannot decide today or tonight, or even look at it, until we figure out what's going to happen. And combine them, yes, we could, but we need to figure out whether you want to. You tell the taxpayers, you want a new school, fire and everything else. So, that's why I said I'm not going to discuss this.
Sure. And then, we can't make a decision tonight, because Councilor Cox's point is, while taking it, we start the planning of it now.
Believe me, there is a plan.
And we are going to have a plan in a year from now. So, that, because otherwise, we can't sell the school thing without a plan about this type of stuff. So, Councilor Gillman.
So, I totally understand how tough our budget is, but one of the things that I have to keep in mind right now is the two schools that are going to be lagging, assuming we move forward with this East Gloucester Veteran's School, are the school, two schools that are in my board, Plum Grove and Beeman's. So, understanding that it's going to be a while after this school hopefully goes forward in September 2022, that we'll be able to get this on down, I would just like us to all make sure that those two schools are tapped on the radar, maybe not immediately for jumping right into a new school, because we're going to have to, we're going to have to take a breath and settle down, but maybe for something that's important for each of those schools, maybe a wonderful community playground for Beeman's. I mean, they've been looking for that, something that is just, something really special for that neighborhood, something. Something that is just, something really special for that neighborhood, um, something special that the administration sees as important for Plum Cove. Just, just something to kinda get the folks that have kids at those schools excited and rejuvenated and feeling like they're really not left behind. Because the, the neighborhood and the community school that they're comfortable with, um, and I use the word community school, not neighborhood, I'm sorry, um, is that, that, is that it would be something that would be exciting for them, something that they could look forward to. Just a thought, but something that I'd like to see us keep on the radar.
There.
Well, the administration here is, you've already cleared, and what we're doing is, once we have the funding, if Fuller goes through, we have that funding, we have someone to look at all our properties. Then we set a plan, we're not gonna set a plan for tomorrow. We're setting a plan, we're doing a five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan, so whoever may be here say, that was completed, that's next, and that's next, and that's next. Instead of keep going over this, so whoever the council may be, whoever the mayor may be in the future, wherever it goes, they have a plan. Not something that's sitting on the shelf or put up sugar, something that after's gonna be done and where the funding can go and what we can do. This administration has been prepared, all of us, including the city councils, because we've all agreed to do that, body for facilities, that body percent, so we're putting away. So if something like that comes, we'll be able to handle it.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else on the, uh, process for the MSBA? Okay, robust, okay? Next item is, uh, safety measures in the Gloucester Public Schools. Uh, this is added after the Parkland, Florida tragedy, um, that there was a, a variety of, of, of emotions and concerns among citizens and elected officials about where things stand for us. So, um, I know there's a couple of issues here. Uh, we've got, um, the security of the school buildings themselves and procedures for the unlikely events that could occur. Uh, we have, uh, a issue that's coming up perhaps next week, it's not really the city council's issue, but it's certainly a community issue of, of the student protest that may or may not happen. So, uh, those are a couple of things, but I would like to start out, Jonathan, if it's okay with you, to just review. Uh, I think, uh, Dr. Sapphire sent a letter to the parents, uh, on the, right after the Parkland incident, which was pretty eloquent in terms of the points that need to be touched on, which is dealing, how to deal with your kids? What are we doing about the security of the schools? So, Rich will hand that one over to you to start.
Um, would you like to begin with that, that incident and follow-up to the fourteenth? Or can I start off with talking more or less about the, the fundamental elements that make up the security in the Gloucester Public Schools?
Sure, several elements.
All right, thank you. Um, and just to give an overview and to tee it up, and of course, Chief McCarthy's here if you have any particular questions about the police's role as well. But there are, um, there are six fundamental elements to our overall approach to security, and I'll summarize them and then talk about them a little bit. First, has to do with our collaboration with the Gloucester Police Department, and I would include the Fire Department and the Health Department as well, depending upon circumstance. The second has to do with our emergency management plans, uh, one which exists for each and every school in the district. The third has to do with the ongoing, uh, review and planning of those emergency management plans by staff within the buildings themselves, so that these are, are working documents in anticipation of, um, what could conceivably happen. The fourth has to do with, uh, drill preparedness, something that, that we have and continue to work in conjunction with the police. And then as ideas and philosophies change about the ways in which we should be responding to certain circumstances, the nature of those drills, uh, is modified as well. A fifth component, uh, which is very important, has to do with addressing mental issues, uh, psychological issues amongst our children and our understanding of their needs, and whether or not, uh, something shows up on the radar, which requires even more of an intervention. And then the last piece has to do with the, uh, everyday building security, uh, that we experience and maintain on a daily basis. So starting first, our close collaboration with the Gloucester Police Department, we do have a memorandum agreement based upon a template provided to us by the Essex County District Attorney's Office. And it lays out for us general principles about how we coordinate with the police department, how we share information, reporting process between school department and the, uh, and the police as well. What sort of notifications are necessary in the Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven, Eight and a Half, which have to do with the, the more dangerous kinds of incidents that could occur in, uh, schools and other mandatory reportable acts. Search and seizure procedures, we work under different standards, probable cause for the police, reasonable cause for schools. And any prosecutorial alternatives such as diversion programs, which might exist. So there's a lot of things that go into the MOA and it forms the basis of our cooperative and collaborative relationship with the Gloucester Police Department.
Just before you go on, Rich, I would like to note for the record, the Chief McCarthy has chosen, John, thank you very much for coming, we really appreciate it.
And, uh, second, are our emergency management plans. Uh, each and every one of our schools has a similar but unique emergency management plan tailored, uh, to their particular school. And, um, the mission and goals of these plans are, of course, to protect lives and property, to respond to emergencies promptly and, um, properly, to coordinate our local emergency operations plans and community resources, and to aid in the recovery, uh, from disasters. There are three major elements, uh, to each of the emergency management plans. The first is direction and control, then there are what's called functional protocols, and then there are the nature of the types of events that could occur themselves. Direction and control refers to who's in charge depending upon the circumstance. It's contingent upon what sort of event has happened and whether the incident commander, the incident command post, remains with the school department, or whether it's turned over to the police or the health department. It's all, again, contingent on, uh, circumstance. The functional protocols are the ways in which schools react in specific situations. And it's entirely possible that a specific functional protocol could be applied to different kinds of circumstances. The kinds of protocols I'm talking about are lockdown procedures, ALICE, which is the newest prevailing idea about how to respond to an armed intruder. Evacuations, reverse evacuations, if it's safer to be in the building as opposed to out of the building. What's called a shelter-in-place, keeping the kids in the classroom. Drop, cover, and hold, which is shelter in place with a little bit extra. Uh, family reunification, off-campus evacuations, and of course, crisis intervention and the mental health resources that we provide when there might be a death, an injury, an emergency, or other traumatic events. Each of these, um, can be specific to various kinds of events, and the types of events that are described, as are the procedures for each and every one of them, include bus accident, fire, bomb threat, an active shooter or armed intruder. Intruder who takes a hostage, hazardous material, release, utility loss or failure, structural failures, medical emergencies, nuclear power plant, radiological events, severe weather, and earthquakes. In case we don't have enough to worry about, we have a document right here in our emergency management plans. Do you do a little flooding? Excuse me, flooding? Flooding, uh, we probably, that's right, it is true. Um, I mentioned the issue about ALICE, uh, it's more complicated than I'm about to say, but it does empower, uh, people in the situation, teachers, staff, to make a decision, uh, should they remain in place? Or should they evacuate their students as quickly as possible? If we're in this building and God forbid there is an emergency that takes place down by the auditorium, we probably would make a decision to try to get out the, the entrances as quickly as possible. If we were in a classroom very close to the auditorium and something was taking place, then the decision needs to be made to barricade the door, lock it up, and prepare to do whatever is possible should an intruder enter into a classroom and try to distract, uh, at that ultimate and most critical moment. But it does provide, uh, options and decision-making, uh, power for those who are directly affected by the emergency, uh, situation. Uh, the emergency management plans, going on to item number three, uh, don't mean much unless there's ongoing planning and review. And each of our schools has a crisis management team, obviously composed of nurses and teachers and social service personnel, administration, and all the rest. And their job is to look at the emergency plans on an annual basis, tweak them, refine them wherever necessary, and when it comes to whatever drills and preparedness take place, uh, they help in the orchestration and the coordination of those events as well. Uh, item number four is drill practice and preparedness. And, um, what we had heard at school committee last night, uh, last Wednesday, excuse me, is that there are the simulations that, uh, we do practice and drill. There are also some real situations that have occurred over the course of the last couple of years, with bomb threats and, uh, threats that there might be an intruder. There have been events that have taken place, and, uh, we have had opportunities, good, bad, or different, to learn from those particular situations. Uh, we're working with the police department, uh, I've mentioned now for the third time that there's a change in the philosophy with armed intruders. So we're modifying the nature of the kinds of drills that we'll be doing in the spring. I should also add that depending upon the level of, uh, of school and student, elementary, middle, and high, there are different ways in which we approach, uh, the way in which drills take place. Clearly, the younger the children are, the more that we place the training and the drill preparation process with the teachers and staff and not with the children, the too young. Um, the fifth issue has to do with addressing, uh, mental issues. Uh, as an ex-principal, I can tell you that there is a network, teachers, students, and everyone else, that, uh, students experience, uh, all sorts of, uh, mental health issues. And in some instances, they may raise to a level that can cause an alarm, uh, in the sense that they might, uh, potentially be injurious to himself or to others. Um, it's very important that a school, as a community, recognizes the need to report situations and cases where there may be concern. To formalize that, of course, at the high school, there are two nurses, two adjustment counselors, a psychologist, four guidance counselors, and administration. Uh, all of the staff members, members have received what's called youth mental health training, which teaches them, or sensitizes them even more to recognize the, the needs, the, the behaviors of students, uh, how to, um, how to respond to them, and of course, how to report them to the appropriate, uh, officials in the building. Uh, likewise, the middle school has three guidance counselors and a student assistance counselor, two nurses, a school psychologist, adjustment counselor, and two assistant principals. And we would like to bring that youth mental health training, which took place in the fall, we'd like to bring that, uh, to the middle school and to, in fact, all of our schools if we can, uh, this year and or, uh, next fall. Each of the elementary schools, of course, has a, a school psychologist and adjustment counselor as well. Uh, each of the schools, all of the buildings have what are called child study teams. Uh, on the best of days, they're looking at the academic issues that might, uh, be confronting certain children, but of course, they're looking at the social-emotional situations with respect to children as well. And, um, they have, uh, considerable outreach to a number of agencies throughout the community in order to help, uh, students who are in the, but they also maintain a strong monitoring force within the building. Uh, last, there is the whole issue of, uh, daily security. And, uh, these are the day-to-day procedures that ensure that when school starts, all doors are locked, should be locked, must be locked, that there is one entrance into the building, that there's a camera at that particular entrance, that the, the person oftentimes is the person who can reach out and speak through intercom to who's coming in, whatever visitor. Um, it's essential that we, uh, channel entry and that we make sure there are sign-in procedures are formal and that they are followed to the letter so that we know who is in the building, when, what their whereabouts are, what their business is, and, uh, that there is a safe and ensuring entry and exit from, uh, from the building of those people as well.
Okay? So that's a great summary of kind of procedures right now. Um, so open it up to comments or questions? Councillor Heck?
That was. The, the experience of a teacher in the moment, trying to make a decision, I can't even imagine, something happens and it's like, so what? With one of your earlier points of the teacher training, having, you know, basically a decision pushed down to the people at, you know, where it's happening. Is there off-site training available for that, or do people come in to help them? Because, I mean, it's, it sounds like, you know, it's pretty intense to be ready for that moment, you know?
And this is where the Gloucester Police Department has come in, and they have sent, uh, their representatives, uh, into the buildings. So they've been the last year and a half of the high school, for example, they've been there three times for training and, and a number of times in the other schools as well. So, I mean, we're talking about an extraordinary, potentially extraordinary situation, as we all know. Uh, in any situation, training to the, to the degree that it can prepares us for emergency-type situations. And, uh, we are mindful of that and will continue to maintain those training sessions and also to complement them with the, uh, the drills that need to take place as well.
Thank you.
So I reached out to Councillor Lundberg a couple of weeks ago, and we had a brief conversation on, um, putting this on the agenda. It doesn't seem to have been on there previously, so we thought it would be a good idea for us at our joint meeting, and I know the school committee, I just had it last week, but, um, I know it's, it's an everyday topic of discussion of the city, um, with our kids. And I hope that other families and the parents are having it with their kids. Um, there is no real, true answer on how to stop this. And I, I mean, I appreciate what the school is doing for our children, to try to keep them protected in school, but I've been doing some research, um, and I found out there are some schools throughout the, the, uh, country that have satellite offices of the police department set up inside the schools. Um, they, they've staffed, you know, two police officers or, or a police officer, and I know the high school has a resource officer in there, and he is unbelievably, um, talented with the kids. Uh, but I think it would be a good idea for us, I know that our police department is shrinking and our police force is growing, that it would hurt to maybe have a satellite office in some of these schools where the children actually get to see, you know, on a day-to-day basis, basis, um, where the officers get to see the children also. Um, but I think just keeping our kids safe in school, you know, back in the, before my time, we were trained, you, people were trained to, uh, vote a nuclear attack or certain things. I mean, I think we really have to focus on keeping our kids, um, you know, to, um, be aware of their surroundings, uh, not just in school, but, you know, at the theater, at church, at the library. You know, we can put metal detectors everywhere, but it's still not gonna stop an attack. If somebody wants to do something, they're gonna do something. So I think situational awareness for our children, um, starts at home, where we have to explain to our children that, you know, you need to have a plan all the time. And I do it with my children, I also do it with my wife. And, you know, she pokes at me and says, I know Dad, why is she going out with her girlfriends and whatnot? So, I mean, these are the things that I've instilled at my house. Um, and like I said, I really appreciate what the school is doing to keep our children safe, but we need to keep them safe, um, everywhere they go, not just the school system. So I think situational awareness, uh, to, 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 uh, to recognize and respond with situations and, and how to react to these situations would be a, would be a good start. And, uh, and also, I think maybe reaching out to the chief and maybe putting these sat, a satellite office in each of these schools, so the children get to really see the day-to-day operation. Um, you know, and like I said, I know Mike Scholer personally, he's unbelievably talented with what he does, but to see a couple of police cruisers out in front of the police, uh, in one of the schools, or even just one police car, day-to-day operations, I think would help keep the schools a little safer, especially when you're pulling in and you see something like that, it's a, it's a, it's a big deterrent. You know, so I think that's someplace to start, you know? And we can go talk about a million different ways to help the kids, but.
Okay, uh, Mayor?
Well, thank you very much. Um, so you've been coming, as you know, in front of our corporation, we're gonna be asking for the city council of thirty-three thousand dollars, um, to continue the training of our offices. We need some more training. We got thirteen offices turning to core, um, active shooter, uh, with the, with the U.S. Marshal, and we have also, uh, Mr. Schoeler and, um, Bossum, who actually is one of the trainers. And not only are they training teachers, they're gonna use some students, we're gonna use some, um, after-school people who have, because our children go to after-school programs. Today, Pat was contacting me because our children go there, what we can do for the community. I'm gonna let, um, Chief McCarthy say some of the things that we are doing, some of the programs that, you know, we have programs established. We don't tell the whole world what we're doing, because you have to protect the children, sometimes you can't see us, but they're protected. And some of the kids, we have to also let them be not afraid about police officers. We started the Kids and Cops program, they're at the elementary schools all the time, even though they have little electric cars, but they are police officers. But what we need to do now is train them all. So, um, Chief, if you mind explaining.
So, John, do you mind joining us up, uh, maybe, uh, Tony and Rich could scoot apart and maybe make a place? Sure. That way, um, our friends, they've been, we are, like, sixteen twenty-three studios now.
We get that thirty-three thousand dollars to come around.
First of all, uh. Thank you. First of all, thank you. We saved some money tonight, because it's not too warm here. Like the mayor told you, first and foremost, we, in conjunction with the school this year, this August, we borrowed Lehman School, up to the chagrin of the custodian, who had just done all the floors, but we were able to host a training with the federal people that are training in active shooter. However, even as a host, we were only able to get, I think, 16 or 18 of our offices trained. We have approximately 60. I asked the mayor when free cash came along, as everybody else did, a little free cash, but one of my requests was for $34,000. The Ann Marshals have a facility at Anson Air Force Base that they train, and they offered to do the training for free. What we have to pay is the overtime. The mayor identified the funds, and it will be coming to the council. That would train everybody, so all our offices would be trained in active shooting. And as you just saw in Parkland, there seems to be some issues over enter, not enter, and that could be, that was the old school, that you didn't enter. You were told not to enter a school, you were told wait for backup, you were told not to go in alone, so this, and as the superintendent just alluded to, Alice is fairly new the last couple of years. Alice is, it gives more onsite in the, and like he explained to you, if we were here and the problem was at the ring, look for an emergency exit door, we're all going out that door. That didn't used to be the case. The case used to be firm jumper in place. So it gives more laterability to your plan. And we have two instructors, we have Mike Blossom and Mike Scola, who are Alice instructors. They, over the last couple of years, have gone in and trained all the school personnel. They have trained past pathways. In the past, they, I saw the email today, that they're looking to update. We've also opted to go into city buildings, because it isn't just unique to schools, as we've seen around the country. It can happen at city halls, it can happen... Yesterday, we were, I had Lieutenant Blossom up at senior camp, they had asked him to come in and go over pre-training for doing an Alice program up there. So we are availing our instructors to different places all over the city. We have our cops and kids programs, which are going into schools, I think they're going into the elementary schools four times a semester now, as well as, we're telling the guys, stop into the schools, stop in, you know, be visible. I think visibility, having the police car drive into the school, it's a deterrent. We don't know how much of a deterrent it is, but it's a deterrent. We are going to try to work with the mayor to, we have one school resource officer, he is at the high school. A recent audit came in, and when we met with the mayor, they recommended we have three. That will take a little bit of budgeting. So maybe you can give that to us tomorrow? But it obviously is going to take a little time to get that done, but that would be our goal. We would love to have a school resource officer at the high school, we'd love to have one at the middle school, and we would love to have one that floated through the elementary schools.
Definitely.
We do have plans in place, as the superintendent alluded to, we do not, I've been getting freedom of information requests constantly over the last two weeks. I just put down public safety denied. We do not give our plan up. If I told you what our countermeasure was to attack, it's like Bill Belichick giving his game, you know, his playbook. We don't do that, so we do have measures, we do have, you know, things in place that we would do. As the superintendent alluded to, we've had several instances this year that were better than drills, because they were the real thing. We were up here...
Do you know about the council two times a week, please, from the Addison Hospital? That council will be...
Yeah, we also have just been granted a grant from the Department of Public Health, along with Beverly and Rockport, Manchester, Essex, and Ipswich, for a full-time mental health-embedded counselor. Gloucester is going to be the recipient of that embedded counselor, two days a week. And when I've talked to them, there's one, she has Danvisian Sale, she has a caseload of somewhere around 350 cases that she does between the two tops. So we're looking to, you know, have this person in place by April.
So there is a need, obviously, for that. But let me ask a question, because it will come, of course, the mayor has just said that, you know, she's looking to add additional resources in that area. As you, from your experience as a law enforcement officer, what value comes from having a resource officer in this school? I mean, I think I know it, but what's...
I really think it's invaluable. Mike Scola is down at the high school, he works, they love him down there, they really do, he works every day, every, it seems like, you know, to refer to the schools, but it seems like every time they have a problem, he's pretty much involved with the problem they have, be it mental health, be it family issue, be it a domestic issue, be it a security issue, he seems to be involved in just about every facet of what goes on down there. He goes to the proms, he goes to all the school events, he knows every kid down there. We run a citizens' police academy within the school, within the high school. I went down there for the graduation, there's different kids, they had to shut the enrollment lock at 50. So he's very involved in just having someone, and I like to use the term "take ownership." When I have someone assigned to the knock cruiser, he takes ownership to his area, might take ownership to the high school. And we do move him up, we moved him up here when we had a problem up here this year, but predominantly, he's at the high school. If we had another school resource officer, I'd like to think that we'd have the same type of arrangement here at the middle school.
Kathy, you did hear that? Yes, following on Steve's comment about kind of general awareness, the other night when Officer Blossom was speaking with us, the thing he stressed when he asked about age appropriateness and drilling, he said, "We are teaching kids skills that they can use everywhere, that they go, you know, what are they aware of, what are their, you know, how do they just protect their own environment and be on the lookout?" And I thought that was really good, particularly when you're talking to the younger kids, because it's kind of general know-how that they have to have, and it's coming from, you know, somebody they would respect. So hopefully, you keep playing those habits of mind in kids. So that really made me comfortable, if the training wasn't just, "Here you are, come here," to scare them when they're in school, it was kind of general safety.
I'm trying to get that link, because I apologize to everyone, he couldn't make it this evening. His presentation to the school committee last week was amazing, all of them. Superintendent, it was like so much that we wanted to get, and I started this, and we, you know, doing a draft on family identification, draft on everything, we've been looking at everything, from hazardous materials to all new things, because before, we only had to worry about certain things, everyone. Now, it's everything we have to worry about, we're looking over there, we got the border help, we do have the fight combat, we are redoing everything possible to make sure that, you know, we're ready, but the main thing too is, he would like to train the children, because when they're at the mall, what do you do? When you're out at the cinema, what do you do? And I had Captain Katie Numerosi come to my office with a lot of concerns from the PTOs, and I think that the PTOs, superintendent, myself, or anyone else, in the safety should meet quarterly and say, "What did you see? What do you want to see? We can work together." So we can rest assure of the things that we do need, and when we do ask the city council, oh, we do need it, we know where to get the funding and how we're going to do it. The elementary schools with kids and cops are going to get them more, and it's hard, because while they're there, there are a lot of volunteers now. The kids and cops, when they go, there's a lot of volunteer police officers, they take time on their own to be there and reunite with the children. My goal is to have someone here, but I met with the Addison Hospital, they need help, because we need to stop the problems too. Katie was saying to me, "You know what? This is great, this person had it to 18, something happened from elementary, we have to stop at elementary level," and she's right. And it's very upsetting that when I talk to Addison, they'll go, "See if they get more grants and help us," but do you realize that when we were fighting last year for beds for addicts, there's no beds for pediatricians. So these kids get back into the schools, these kids are being brought to your paraprofessionals and brought, we need to train everyone, but we need to also, what I like about this council that comes down, she'll be able to understand that if this child needs to be septic, this person won't, she'll be able to die, unfortunately, we're going to have to look at that. So we are trying to do that. And a lot of the stuff that he said, like, he, I don't know, that's up to the safety department, so he says, "Rest assured, somewhere I'll drill them," because really, if I was a disturbed student, and I knew that every time there was a fire alarm, I ran to the football field, and now I'm going to call a fire alarm, and we're all around there, I could go out there and shoot them, for the bit. But that's what I'm saying, how do we do, stay in, stay out, what do we do, what do we call that? Of course, if the resource officers are there, they can make the call, make the judgment, and we're working on that. We want your children to be safety, and we're going to get there.
Kathy, you have a call?
I'm on it.
Okay, Counselor Gillman? Come over here. Counselor Gillman?
So I have three questions. My first is regarding buses. So are we also giving the bus drivers some type of training, so if they know if someone were to jump on at a bus stop or something like that? I mean, I just...
There are mandatory bus trainings that take place twice each year, which involve evacuation for buses. I don't know per se that if they have been trained to address an issue of somebody would jump on a bus, I'd like to think that they could use their common sense in a situation where somebody who doesn't belong coming on a bus is not allowed on that bus.
Right.
Someone concerned with that too.
I'm just wondering if someone, if some other program that the chief might work with...
I think I'd have to look into it, but to tell you the truth, I don't know whether the instruction, I haven't heard about guys going to the bus company, but Kathy Burge could have her own trainer that comes in. It's something I'd have to ask.
Thank you. I also wanted to go back to item number six, the everyday building security, and my question is, do you have the police department or some independent group in the city spot-check from time to time, just to see what types of gaps there might be in terms of the process of, do doors always be shut?
We're sort of aware ourselves, we have conversations with PPW, because they're in the buildings doing maintenance, and they provide us with feedback. Execution, which is at the heart of your question, of these daily security measures, is actually paramount, and it is our job to make sure, and I have a leadership meeting coming up on Thursday, so there will be another reminder about how exceptionally important that is. As we have our conversations with Lieutenant Gossem, all the drills and preparedness, that's certainly something we could take up as well, because it might lend a little credence to reminders in the building. I mean, it's easy on a daily basis, they're working, they're teaching, they're doing their thing, it's easy for, I don't want to use the word complacency, but it is easy to not have this at the forefront of your thinking, which in a way is very healthy, but at the same time, we must remain vigilant as well.
Great. And my final is, I love all the things that are happening in the schools, to teach the students, and I'm wondering if you have a plan in place to connect with the parents on the specific, new initiatives that you're teaching the kids, is there a way that via the email system, you can share with parents at the same time what the kids have just learned, so the parents can have that as a transferable new skill, to know that if something were to happen in a movie theater, you'd probably kind of do something similar, just to get the parents having the dialogue with the children and having that conversation? I'm not sure if we've seen that connection yet, and I just think that that might be something pretty, pretty helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd probably start with the kids going home and telling the parents, "This is what we did in school today," and that can be maybe a reminder to the schools and through our guys when they're doing drills, that type of thing. And I'm sure the school...
Normally, any drills that we do that are exempt, do you need parents' permission anyways?
They'd be notified, yes, because, and that's one of the things that we brought up at the school committee last week, was initially, especially initially, parents would be notified of drills ahead of time, just so that we don't create any panic situations. And then, believe it or not, the drills will work better if nobody's notified, and we see how we make out with that, and how we make out with the social media, and what comes in, and that's all part of, you know, advanced drilling in the future, so...
And allow me to contradict myself. On one level, you want to sort of keep what you do and how you react, as the chief has suggested, you sort of want to keep that as a private, in-house kind of matter, so that it's not loosely being disseminated, that kind of information. On the other hand, some of the summaries that I mentioned at the outset here is something I'm thinking of putting into a letter as a follow-up. Counselor Lundberg opened up our conversation with the issue of Parkland and follow-up and so on and so forth, and I'm preparing to send out a letter, which I've shared with you, with respect to how we're going to handle the walkout, but it also perhaps makes sense, as you're suggesting, to send out a letter saying that these are the ways in which we maintain our security now and so on, so it's, your point's well taken, and there's always potential contradictions to maybe think about.
Thank you. And there's one that attended that meeting last week, the school committee made, said that it was wonderful, so I'll look forward to watching it on TV, so thank you, thank you. Bye, Elaine, that was us.
Did you have something to add?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Obviously, we're talking about a very important issue, which I emphasize with the mayor, because she has to handle the funding. This is going to cost a lot of money. Chief McCarthy, you typically have four cars on in Gloucester, you have Magnolia, West Gloucester, East Gloucester, Laneesville, downtown. It's been that way for decades. We've increased, we've increased the number of teachers, aides, but we're talking about school security, as I've spoken to Counselor Lundberg, we're at the end of the road. Woburn has a school shooter, active shooter, they have assets coming in in all directions. We are here at the end of the road. Chief has four officers out there, he has a lieutenant, two sergeants, he's limited in what he can do, assuming all his officers are sitting ready, but I know his officers are straight up, they've got cars, we all know the problems that we have in Gloucester. We don't need to get into those issues, that his men, people want his men to be out there shooting radar, and I know the chief will put, you make the call, and he'll do his best to shoot radar, but they're also trying to keep problems under control in our city. So we, I think we need to look at this as a whole. Again, it's not going to be cured. I put a council order forward on the 15th after the Parkland about metal detectors. I have been in some of the schools, not all of them, I've been in this school during the daytime, controls, I saw students exiting all doors at lunchtime, I was shocked, shocked. I went into a school 20 years ago in China Mae, 20 years ago, tried to get into the school to look at a construction project, I couldn't get into the school 20 years ago. We have, we're obviously talking about building new schools, why? Because our schools are old, and they're old, they don't have the safety measures, they don't have the glass, they don't have the enclosures. This is a serious issue. Counselor Gillman brought up a huge issue about the buses. I mean, that's a major concern to all of us, all the parents, that have to put their children on our buses every day. I mean, we can't, we can't, we can sit here all night and come up, dream up problems that Chief McCarthy is going to have to deal with, and he has four officers.
Well, that's not true. If you know, we asked for a waiver, how many of them go into the academy?
Three. No, no. I mean, I'm not here to...
Yeah, but I need you to know that, so you don't put fear, that you let people know that they watch, and we only have four. Well, if we only have four, maybe we'll go do something. We have more than four.
Luckily, schools are in session during the day. I mean, we have detectives working during the day, we have, you'd be surprised how many people we can get in a school in a hurry.
And we do have, we do have Essex, Rockwell, believe me, we all interact with one another, but I just want to put the fear abroad. I know, but listen, please, but just saying, we have four officers, you're, now, you're letting people who could be estranged in on, gee, they only have four, maybe I'll have one school, and then the police officer at the other one. We have more than four, so don't come to Gloucester. So the fact is, we are, we hear you, we're doing that, we actually asked for a waiver... We actually asked for a waiver, which no one's done, because we're shocked, to make sure that we have it. And if we didn't do this because of this, we did it because we needed it. We understand that we have more staff, more schools, one at Clunk Cove, one over here. We're doing that, and we're doing the best we can. And you know what? When it came to that, let me look at the money. We often put it in the budget for that, because the fact is, we need them for the whole safety of everyone. And the fact is, when we had a crisis in Lanesville, you had the SWAT team, you had this. When there's incidents, we have all other police staff. We go there, and they come here. And in order to press to help other communities, we need more. So we already got hired three more, we have the facility coming up again. We are on top of it, and thank you for your concern. But people who wanna come to Gloucester, we have plenty of people, we've got SWAT teams, they're open. I just don't want people, because last time someone said, oh, you only have four, people were getting robbed. They were calling. I have an emergency here downtown. We were sending all the crews to downtown, and they were rubbing out of town, West Gloucester. So I don't want that to happen, and we're not gonna have that.
So the office...
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, getting into the logistic details of how the police department operates is not something we're gonna do tonight. What we are gonna do is really express the things, the areas of concern that we have, where we want the people who we hire to do this for us to address those issues. So let's make sure we do that.
But again, I brought this council order on the 15th, and I'm glad it's, we're talking about this. It's a huge issue. But we can allow it to lie, not take, not take action, because again, I think we have definite needs for improvement in the overall control of our schools. Parents have contacted me, I'm sure they've contacted all of us with concerns. And every time there's an active shooting event throughout our country, you get them all, you get more calls.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tony. And then Jen. Chief McCarthy, you know, said that the student resource officers were invaluable, and I think he was understating it. You know, the true value is not necessarily security, but it's the advanced social work that they do with the kids. So if the kids have, particularly children who live sort of on the edge, and they develop a healthy relationship with a uniformed police officer who can be a resource for them for the rest of their life, this is, these are life-changing moments that these resource officers, and the more that we can have, the better off we are, and the younger that we get, these kids, and the cops and kids. Because if you really create a relationship that early, you make a lifelong change in behaviors. So I just wanted to state that it's more than invaluable. Plus, and you know, Steve brought up the situational awareness. Now, I believe that we've worked on situational awareness, you know, since, for quite a while. I remember the stranger danger video. You know, so we can incorporate it in all sorts of discussions without it being fearful. So, you know, and Officer Lieutenant Goss, that was one of his main points, was to put that up. So I think, you know, that, and a question I have is, is the mental health councils we're gonna get, are they for the students, for the city?
It's for the city. We work directly through the police department, but we can direct that resource to where we feel we need it, so.
Because that's one place that we've actually increased our resources in the schools, is with the adjustment councils in all the elementary schools, labs, really adding them to all of them. It's just, you know, Gloucester is truly a city with all the different nuances that cities have with, you know, and we have a population that sometimes needs a little bit more concentrated effort than the other section of the population. And if we can, if we can satisfy some of those needs, you really mitigate the institutional stuff that you have to do later, because you have corrected it early on. And so that's one of the places the schools are really trying to have an effect, is because of the latest explosion of social emotional issues that have come upon society lately. And so it's really gonna focus on us, but, you know, again, we have to weigh what we can dedicate our resources to.
Can I just jump on that also? Because concerns for a lot of parents was this. You have a resource officer, so he's in the front of the building, and I'm in the back. Who's gonna let me know that someone's in the back of the building? And some are our phones, can they call 911? We're checking all that out. Yes, they can, there's a lot of the phones that can, but a lot of them are dead service. You can't even use a cellphone here. Chief McCarthy, again, came up with something, talked to Dr. Sapphire today. I think with minimum money, Verizon gives the, where we can all use cellphones. I know you don't want kids to use cellphones, but at least they can work if you need a 911. We're working on that, because the fact is, the resource officer can be in the front. What are you gonna do with someone in the back? What good is it if the doors are open? You have something in the front, and they're opening their doors. It's hot, they open the doors for air, the windows. It's if someone, we need to prepare and be able to call and let people know, lockdown. Because if someone's in the, someone's in the front, and she's not saying hello, 911, or they were saying at the hospital, someone can call code 33. Every teacher would know code 33, someone's in the building. We need to practice on some of the stuff that they do at hospitals when an intruder comes in. And so we're going to be doing that, we have to do that. Even if we didn't, any kind of intruder, someone who's gonna scare you, someone who is mentally ill, what's the code for that? What can we do? And we will do that. I'm freezing, what's the code for I need?
Councilor Holden, next.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, uh, I did attend last week's school committee meeting. I took copious notes, I was there the entire time. And between that meeting and today's meeting, it is abundantly clear to me that everyone involved with our children in this school system cares deeply about their safety, about their social, emotional, and physical health. And Jamie, I appreciate it. I, as a parent, I want to say that I recognize you're looking out for our children's safety as much as everybody else. So thank you. I will say, I really appreciate Mayor Taken's efforts, Chief McCarthy's efforts, and Superintendent Sapphire's efforts to concentrate on our children's social, emotional health, on those social safety nets. We cannot quantify the value that they provide, but we certainly know that mental health counselors and resource officers are effective. We cannot have enough of them, the more the better. It can only serve to keep our children protected now and into the future. The bonds that our kids develop with those counselors and with the resource officers could possibly save a life, maybe multiple lives. So I would certainly support any funds directed toward helping in that way. We have a seven-year-old who is attending West Parish right now. We fully intend to keep her in Gloucester Public Schools throughout her school career. And I do, we could talk about logistics, we could talk about architectural issues with each of our school buildings, but... Sorry, this is, it's an emotional thing. I mean, it's an emotional thing for me as a mother. But I don't think that we can underestimate the value of more mental health counseling. So I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to comment. Thank you. A few things on the table. First, to Jamie, I work in the courthouse every day. I work upstairs with police department, trust me, and I'd say there's way more than four police officers on duty during the day. There's probably six or seven buildings dealing with us, which doesn't even count the guys on the street. So anybody be sure that there's plenty of police officers, lots of police officers during the day. And I wanted to respond to the mental health a little bit. We're talking about getting a new mental health person, probably work out of AGH or somewhere. I commend that, but I'm not sure if the community is well aware that you can petition, go to the courthouse or the police department under Mount General Law, Chapter 123, Section 12E. Anyone can petition someone for mental illness. Those services are available. Getting that counselor to come to Gloucester is so wonderful here, because...
And we're working on more, because the fact is, we've also worked on training. How do you get that? How do you understand, or you see a child, is that child being stubborn? Is that child having, needs help? How do we do that? We need training, and we need the help to tell us. Because you can say that child, oh, she's just acting up, or that child's whatever. But when you see it every day, how do we do? The teacher, the teacher, you know, we need more. And Addison gave us a visit, we met, we're going for more grants, more things. And I'm working with the DA's office too, because what's happening too is children who have trauma, and no one knows about the trauma that's happening in the household, they're going out and taking out on the teachers. The teacher doesn't know. How do you, are they not trained? And yet, unfortunately, our teachers, they're being mothers, teachers, therapists, all in one, is how do we do? How do we help the training? How do we help the teachers too?
So the point is, I see more mental health ability coming to this community, which is something to commend, because the issue's been there for a long time, and I can tell you before, it's overwhelming with some of these issues. I think there's not enough support, there aren't enough support coming. But Dr. Sapphire brought up some reminders that I'd like to key on, key on, and I think Mayor Mr. Papia also mentioned it. Something that doesn't cost money is the reminders that we need to give to the school staff. The spring weather's coming. I lived in the veterans' area, grew up with it. I know those doors are open every day in the classroom after May to get the fresh air in the room. Well, it's wonderful to have that fresh air, that's a huge security region. I know perhaps constant oversight to our staff over the next six months or so, or while school's in session, to make sure those doors are closed. Not that I wanna ruin the fresh air coming into the room, but that is a huge security issue if all these doors and all these elementary buildings are open. So I think that's something we can control without costing money. Also, getting food deliveries. I know some of the doors, I think I had asked you, some of the doors, I mean, we see food deliveries are solid, you know? Doing something like the ring doorbell, and you know who's on the other side before you open the door, and being more cautious of that. So I think there are a lot of safety protocols that we could pay more attention to and have more oversight in the schools that would help without the cost of having to come to the city council that could assure the community and parents that we are taking things seriously, you know? Gone are the days we can leave doors open, it's just, it's not feasible anymore. So, and then taking in account of in our school buildings, I don't know if the DPW's done this, but I know one thing I've heard from teachers and parents is that not all the doors have locks on them. So let's at least get an assessment of that, maybe not replace them all now, to say, hey, we can buy 50 this year, 20 next year, free cash come. At least get locks on the doors. I've heard Chief McCarthy say that that was one of the plans in a safety reaction, is to stay in home and lock the door. Well, what do you tell the teacher who doesn't have a lock on the door? So even just simple little things, I think we can start working on, paying more attention to. I know everybody's looking for money for everything, and it's gonna be impossible to meet the needs of all the safety for all the city and along with everything else that's going on. But I think the simple little steps that we can really be proactive on now, put a little time into it, assure the teachers, yes, we are paying attention, we are recognizing where the locks are gone, or we are gonna make you shut the door. Simple little things like that can go a long way.
Melissa, if I can intervene through the chair. On February 27th, the DPW, Tom LaFerr, Matt Foul, Rand Terrace, Superintendent Sapphire, Mike Dale, and Tony Gross went over mainly the schools that are moving Gloucester High School, what doors, repairs, cameras, locks. West Parish, 42 cameras are being replaced. They do have, they are, because I heard that from Katie, when she came into my office, if we hear, and we work together to get these things done, and she says, well, what good is it if there's no locks? Or someone's over there? We're hearing the parents.
And getting this message out is huge, so.
Mike Lawson said, he said, he says, I have four kids in the school. If I'm gonna protect mine, I'm gonna protect yours.
Perfect, I wish we could see it tonight, say it again.
Yes, we'll get that link out.
We all have that emotional connection as well. Anyone else? Great, this has been very helpful. Thank you, chief, for coming. I will mention, Councilor O'Hara said that he had submitted a council order about this matter. He and I have been working on that to make sure that it is consistent with the charter. We will have it out. It'll just be a reminder of what we are doing here tonight, and what we will continue to do every week now until the ever, forever. This is with us forever. It's like the rising sea level, which is not going away. So we need to be prepared, and I'm really impressed with the, we've got...
I would like to just make one last point, is that as we've discussed, West Parish has all of the facility safety requirements that they determine are necessary today. And as we replace our schools, and I think that this adds some urgency to replacing our schools, they will get, and these safety procedures will evolve, as they have since these schools were built in, you know, well, this school in whatever it was, the 70s, and then back to other schools built in the 40s and 50s, that replacing the schools will make these schools incredibly, you know, the structure themselves, they will be so much safer. Because replacing locks in these old schools is very costly. You know, you just think, oh, we'll just replace all the locks up. Minimum $100 for an industrial handicap. Plus, you got old doors and jams that nothing lines up. It's, you got fire doors that now you gotta spend, you gotta replace the whole unit, so it...
Well, we have a lot to learn. What are you looking at?
There's Melissa just pointed out, let's get it.
Well, we don't start. Something I never think of.
Right, but what I'm, I don't know, the point I was making is, we need to weigh our new versus.
Anyone else?
Just reassure, we're starting, and we're not gonna do all 100 doors. We're gonna do one building, and we're doing that, we're doing that. We started, we're starting to prepare. And as soon as we finish the project, then we're all over again. It's about building.
Okay, thank you, thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Say it, say it what you like, because now we go to the easy part, which is the 2019 school budget. So on this matter, you know, the school, this school does its own budget. Mayor, of course, has a lot of input to the budget, and then, you know, the school comes up with a budget. And then, we ultimately get to vote on it at the city council level, but we don't have any kind of input online items and that sort of thing. But I wanted, yes, Dana?
I'm sorry, because this is not a competition, and I'm...
What?
She can't handle it. I mean, for example.
Okay. So for everybody in the audience, we're quiet. So Jonathan and I discussed what the scope of this review would be, just to give everybody kind of a clue as to what is gonna, you know, while we don't, at the council level, deal with the items, item by item on the school budget, it's a very important part, the city budget. And so we just wanted to get kind of an orientation as to where things stand, and what are the challenges, not how you solve them, but what challenges are, so. If you want to say something about that too.
Yeah, just so it's clear, the school department is the only department in the city that develops their own budget, and the school committee votes on it, and then we present it to the mayor. All the other departments develop their budget, and they go there, find four or five lawyers, and negotiate it. And so our budget is, is, we control our budget. We, the city council can approve it, or the mayor makes a recommendation. So we put forth a budget, and it isn't necessarily what gonna be what the administration will recommend. But what we, what you're gonna see tonight is the instructions that we were given was to the superintendent and the financial control to develop a level service budget. And that's what we have in front of us. And we're, we're fully aware that this is not the budget that we're gonna end up with.
I'm gonna increase the heat budget. Oh, that's in the DPD.
So anyways, the superintendent will present the budget as it stands today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first slide is the FY19 budget calendar. Most of you are probably quite familiar with this. The work that will be done this month, since the draft level service budget was presented to the school committee last week, will be taken up by the school committee in anticipation of the public hearing on April the 4th, with the expectation that the school committee will vote to approve a budget to send forward to the mayor sometime in the middle of April. Historically, the mayor then sends the budget to you, the city council, in and around, or honor about May the 1st. And the city council then, of course, will have its review and public hearings beginning around May the 29th as well. City council will then ultimately vote on the entire city's appropriation, honor about June the 13th. And then the school committee final vote is, usually follows that fairly closely within a week's time. Of course, all budgets are designed to support the educational program. And the next slide simply gives you the listing of the various programs, initiatives, structures that we feel are necessary in order to provide a good educational product across the district. Curriculum review and revision is an ongoing cyclic, periodic exercise that takes place at all levels and in all subjects. In particular, we continue our examination of the preschool through grade eight literacy to ensure continuity, not only with the standards, but preparing each child step by step, grade to grade, to grade, so that the transition and the learning are smooth. In special education, also in terms of our civil rights, in terms of our English language learners, we were audited this past year by the coordinate program review. It went well, but there are some particular things that we want to look into and monitor with respect to processes, procedures, and protocols and the like. So we'll be looking at that in special education. I think everyone knows that the next generation NCAS is now the new assessment. It is different. It is legally held for higher expectations. And we need, for all of our preparation and all of our instruction, not only to promote student achievement on a daily basis, but to have it reflect on how they're going to perform on their next generation NCAS as well. By 2019, all grades will be taken to test online, so that's an added demand, if you will, challenge, so that our children not only are prepared to answer the questions, but can also go through the mechanics and demonstrate the fluency, both in terms of what they're doing on the computer, but also in terms of writing and problem solving and be able to do that electronically. Strengthening higher order thinking skills. That particular initiative is one of the ways in which we're trying to promote that kind of facility in our kids. There are all sorts of critical intellectual faculties. Ultimately, we don't just want students to remember something, we want them to be able to apply it, to evaluate, to make judgments, all the higher order thinking skills that are part and parcel of decision-making processes. Technology, of course, is big. Our one-to-one technology Chromebook initiative, all of our students' grades eight and next year through grade 12 will have their own Chromebook. Grade six, seven, and eight, there are enough Chromebooks in every classroom, but we don't have them taken home. And of course, we have to make sure at the elementary level that there are ample amounts of technology as well. I will add that the technology is in the service of the types of teaching and learning that needs to take place. As we all know, the computer opens up learning to the entire world, the information is astronomical. And to the extent that we can teach children to become that much more self-reliant in terms of taking charge and responsibility for their own education, then technology will serve that purpose. Meeting individual needs. We have students who struggle on a daily basis and students who are ready to take off like rockets. And in each instance, we have to find ways of meeting their individual needs as, as best as possible. We've spoken a lot about social, emotional considerations. If children don't come to school prepared emotionally to learn, they ain't going to do so. So that is a big part, and we have spoken about that. Our English language learner population has plateaued over the last two years. We went from about 80 students to 168. We're now at about 160. We've added three ELL teachers over the course of the last year or two. And ensuring that we're not only compliant with the rules and regulations for educating ELL students, but that we're doing it well, and that our teachers are being trained in what's called things like shelter English immersion and the various strategies and tactics for working with our ELL students is something that we're responsible for. Do you want to say something?
We don't have the slide in this particular presentation, and since I'm Chair of BNF, I think I'll take the liberty to speak up, but I would just like the counselors to know that at veterans, 20% of our students in veterans are English language learners. That's a huge number. And Beeman, the next school that has the next largest amount, has 12%. So, but that's, just think about that. You've got kids that are struggling with the language, and they have one year to be tested. So not only do we have this being acclimated to a new culture, learn a language, and then also have to learn all this advanced critical thinking, so it just, well, it wasn't in here, so I just get your turn in there. Thank you.
The last two items that are listed, of course, are the use of data to inform curriculum instruction and assessment. Data is exceptionally important in how we adjust and modify it with the needs of our students. And then last, of course, is professional culture and community building. A cohesive culture that is, that fosters high expectations and nurtures our kids and that we're able to maintain and add the outreach to the community as well, so they know what we're doing. Turning specifically towards the budget. Hang on, I have to page. On the next slide, I think it's slide five, there's a summary of the annual increases to the budget. These are the usual suspects, and we'll get into some of the specifics in the next slide or two. Cost of living adjustments, although we have received good news with respect to health insurance, both retired and active, there is a bump to the budget as a result. Increase in special education costs, increased tuitions, transportation. Special education right now is close to 30% of our budget, and that's, that's quite large. Step increases means that if a teacher goes from step six to step seven in terms of years of service, there is a step increase that's associated with that. And lane changes involve if a teacher has taken further graduate courses and goes from a master to a masters plus 30, so somebody can go from step six to step seven and get a bump, and they can go from masters to masters plus 30 and get an increase as well. These are incentives that have built in to the contract in our long standing. Anticipated grant reductions, I'll show you a slide on that, is something that we have seen for the most part over the last few years. And what we can always expect are unanticipated expenses. Most often, it has to do with special education costs. In the last couple of years, it had to do with English language learners. A family can move into the community, the child needs out of district placement, and that's, that is an addition of the cost which we were not able to formulate in terms of how much. But it will happen. Turning, so you see the, some of the summaries, the FY18 budget is at approximately $41 million. The draft FY19, given what I had just mentioned, is at 43.2. So there is a proposed increase for a level service budget of $2.2 million. As things stand right now, the budget is at a 5.44% increase. Giving some of the specifics on slide seven, health insurance, active and retired, is responsible for increasing the budget. These are the significant costs of about $118,000. The step increase that I mentioned is at almost $400,000. Lane changes is at $235,000. There's a new element to the contract whereby teachers need to tell us November 1st this year if they intend to earn enough credits next year to raise them from a masters plus 30 or from a masters plus 30 to a masters plus 60. That particular figure, though, according to our records, is fairly consistent with what we have been allocating toward those changes over the last few years. Special education increase to out of district is at $411,000. So this portion of the increases to the budget is around $1.16 million. Turning to the next page, is more of the same. The special education out of district transportation, an increase to the budget of $23,000. We anticipate at a minimum, our contract for the bus fleet lease is up. At a minimum, it's going to increase 10%. That's around $28,000. Contractual increases as a result of negotiations is at $698,000. Minus the retirements, you see that at 147,514. Total of the significant cost increases to the budget is at $1.76 million. Just going back to our special education out of district costs, on slide 10, you can see comparisons. The fiscal year, of course, is in the top row. The actual cost in the millions of dollars is in the middle row. And the numbers of students, the 72, 63, 64, 64 indicates the number of students who were in out of district placement in each of those years. So currently, we have 64 students, which is the same as last year. The last three years have been fairly static and a little bit more back in FY15. Again, there are movements, there are referrals, and in some instances, there are graduations and students can age out at the age of 22. So it's often the numbers are in flux as far as out of district placement. This, this number also includes the, the fact that we're adding 3% to the cost of special education out of district placements, which is fairly traditional and fairly consistent. The consortia applied to the Department of Ed, they receive approval, and then their cost to us go up 3%. It also includes a reduction in circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement for any cost above four times the average of what it costs to educate a child. So if the four times the average is $48,000 and you send a child out for $100,000, so there's $52,000. What the state has historically promised is a 75% reimbursement of that, $52,000. What they have this year and what so far is in the budget for next year is at 65%. So that's going to cost us $150,000 to $200,000 in the budget if they save 65%. We've been in contact, particularly with Senator Tar. I received an email today, in fact, of a letter that he has co-sign asking the Senate to look at the budget, to find the money to fund circuit breaker at its full 75%. So I can very appreciatively say that he's been working very hard on this particular Some of the grant reductions. We actually, for this year, did receive an increase in Title I. Title I is around, is $550,000. That is based upon low income. The percentage of low income in a particular school determines the amount of the grant, plus the amount of the grant that's allocated for each of our schools. It should be noted that due to a change in demographics, we right now have three schools that are Title I schools. Next year, probably all five of our elementary schools will be Title I because of the shift and because of the amount of low income students have in the district. Also, due to a change in the calculation method for Title I, we do expect a reduction from the 550 to around $514,000 next year. Again, to repeat, it's been calculated a different way. Then you see some of the smaller, but things that have to be taken into account. Title II Part 8 has to do with education and excellence in teaching. A lot of it has to do with professional development, some technology. Early childhood will decrease by about $662. Perkins Grant is applied to the vocational school. And two grants, Fed Improvement and Special Education, both have been used for professional development, some contractual services, and some stipends, both will be going away. So that's around $26,000 that will disappear next year. The next slide refers to additions to this particular draft, new additions, and it's blank. Perhaps I should put down the school resource officer. That is to determine how we will fund that. Our principals and department managers have provided us with a list of approximately $385,000 worth of new additions. This is a level service budget, which is already 5.44, 5.22, 44%. So none of those requests right now are in that, in this particular budget. It should be noted that not all of the salaries in the district come out of the operating budget, that there are approximately $2 million that come out of grants and revolving funds. And in slide number 13, you see a listing of various grants, Title II down to Title I. There's about $1 million worth of salaries that are grant funded. And going to the next slide, there's a variety of equal amount that come out of revolving funds as well. Revolving funds, as you know, that they can turn over from year to year. So that's where the budget stands. We've not yet gotten a fixed figure from the city. They're obviously working on their budget deliberations and discussions. But the last slide gives you a sense of what the district will need to cut in order to meet a certain percent based upon what the city says that they feel that they can afford for the school department. So if we're asked for a, to come up with a 4% increase to this current year's budget, then we will have to cut $591,000, almost $592. If we're asked to come up with a 3% budget increase, then we'll have to cut $1 million. And if we're asked to do a 2.25% increase, then we'll have to cut about $1.3 million. But we will be waiting and listening and very anxious to hear what awaits us with respect to our further budget budget plan.
First time the company speaks, I so enjoy it.
So, so I'd like to point out to the council certainly is, if you refer back to the budget council calendar, the school committee will take a public hearing on April 4th and a final vote on April 11th. So what Rich has given us tonight is still a work in progress. And then it comes to city council, at which time Counselor Cox and the Budget Finance Committee will, in their course of their duties, doing the city budget, will have an opportunity to spend some time with this budget when it's final. So we can ask questions tonight, but realize that it's not final yet, and we will have plenty of opportunities, including budget finances, when we ask those questions. That's a great overview. Thank you. Anybody have anything you want to say now?
Just about the process. We have not, we have not voted this budget, still, this is, this is out of the administration. We will vote a budget for a public hearing towards the end of the month. And we'll have a public hearing in the beginning of April. And then we'll have, after we've gone to public, we'll vote another budget that will then send to the, to, to the administration. The administration will then do it and make their recommendations, which will necessarily be the same thing that we vote. That's what will come to your, your Budget Finance Committee. So there's always this delta between what we end up by voting and what, what you're actually reviewing, some type of process of the vote law.
Quick, motion to adjourn.
Sure. I'm going to, the next, the last item was issues regarding school facilities maintenance. As everyone knows, the city is responsible for the buildings. Early on in this compact, we had some issues. Pretty sure we don't have hardly any issues right now. We don't need to talk about that. We can save that for our next meeting. And so I have a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
Absolutely. That's all for us.